Several reference scriptures to go along with it. But again, I'm gonna hit high points and get us on through this. And I hope you studied ahead, and I went ahead and I studied all the way through this one. Don't know if we'll make it there or not, but we're in the man up section. Man up section. You know, we got a lot of men in our church, but we got a lot of men that are just sitting there. That's what a lot of our men are doing, and of course, that is not what the Lord would have us to do. The Lord wants us to get involved. The Lord wants us to be active in what's going on around us. So that first paragraph there, a little over halfway down is where we're gonna pick up. Says, "In a world of chaos and confusion and disconnectedness and disunity," sounds a lot like today. We're needing a kingdom man to rise up and bring harmony where there's conflict, bring peace where there's chaos, and now is the time to get along. You know, we've got to do our best, and we'll look at that scripture that talks about the fact that we need to try to get along with everybody over in the book of Romans we'll look at in a minute. But God is a God of unity and togetherness, and God does not hang out in atmospheric division. And a lot of people come after the scripture, and they say, "Oh, well, Bible is, the Bible is." And about 99% of them people ain't never read the Bible. They're basing it, you know, kinda like you said, a lot of decisions being based on Facebook. A lot of people's spiritual decisions are based on, "I don't know what, but it is not the Bible." And that is an issue, and you know, they throw things out. I mean, back when we had Barack Obama, he condemned the Bible. Condemned the Bible and called himself a Christian. I have a problem with that. I mean, the world leader, world power leader, and gets up there and condemns the word of God. Condemns the word of God. And you know, we got somebody in the office now that is, "Full term abortions are just fine." That is ungodly, and call himself a Christian. I got a problem with that. The word of God has a problem with that. You ought to have a problem with that. Now naturally, you know, we need to look in the mirror. We all got stuff we need to clean up and do better at, but you cannot stand for something that is ungodly and call yourself a godly man. You can't do it. Now, people do it, but that is the devil. That is absolutely the devil. And you know, and we know that the devil knows scripture front and back. And I mean, he used it on Jesus. I still be tickled every time I think about that, that the devil tried to use scripture on Jesus, but he used it out of context. And a lot of people do that, and some people are so ignorant to the scripture, they don't even realize they're using something out of context. And you know, I've had people, I would have thought mature Christians, been in church, you know, since before I was born, and asked me some of the most elementary questions. Where have you been in church for 50 years? And elementary stuff. And it's because we don't see a need to actually get in and study the Bible. And there's an issue, and there's a whole lot in here for us as men. But God is a God of unity and togetherness, and He does not hang out in an atmospheric division. He doesn't. People can say, "This is not of God." Now, God's allowing things to happen. God didn't make this happen. God's allowing things to happen. He's trying to get the church's attention. I said it through the whole COVID mess from the beginning. He's trying to get the church's attention. Well, that didn't work. Well, let's make it, let's let it get a little bit worse. I mean, you look at what Job went through. You look at what others in the scripture went through, and we need to listen. And men are called to be spiritual leaders. They're called to be spiritual leaders in their home, in their church, in their community. We are called to be spiritual leaders. So it says, "Describe some ways men can rise up and bring harmony in the area of division and disunity in our land." And I put simply, "Let God be number one." Let it be number one. People say, "Well, you know, make him Lord of your life." Well, he's already Lord, but you need to let it be Lord of your life. And you know, so what can we do to rise up and bring harmony? Just let God be number one. And you can't just say you want him to be number one. You have to live a life that shows that. And Amos, chapter three and verse three. Amos, chapter three. So Amos was really, he was talking about judgment on the northern kingdom of Israel. Amos, chapter three. And you have a lot of people just like now. You know, we, sometimes we get things crossed up and we're not together, and we try to do things together, you know, and refer back to that meeting we went to at Fort Polk that time. And they weren't just bringing different denominations together. They were bringing different religions together. There will never be any unity in that. There won't be. There can't be. We ain't serving the same God. And they say, "We serve a God, and they ain't serving a God at all." But Romans, Amos, chapter three, verse three. And he's looking at sin, separates people from God, and he asks a question here. But it's one of those questions that also poses the answer in it. Says, "Can two walk together except they be agreed?" Can two walk together except they be agreed? And I see people, you know, I had a guy come up to me the other night and invited me to a little church together. And he said, "Well, man," he talked about, "Well, I did this in this church, and I did this in that church, and this denomination, and that denomination. I just believe them all." And I mean, he was so confused. He was so confused. And that is why it is so critical to get into the Word of God. And I mean, I thanked him for the invitation, but I'm not going. Be of sound mind. And the Bible says, "God is not the author of confusion." And when we set up something like that, that is major confusion. And again, that meeting that we went to on Polk's that time, you know, Brother Clarence and I walked out going, "We just, we don't wanna be a part of this." You know, Brother Tommy hadn't been here long. He and I walked out, and he's like, "Brother, that's just confusion." You know, and we talked about that, and you know, we made a decision to not join in. But again, "Can two walk together except they be agreed?" And the way we rule our land now is give and take. I mean, we got people voting for stuff that they're completely against to get something that they're for. That is, you're not walking together unless you be agreed. So that is how, that's a lot of the reason we're in the mess we're in. Yeah, negotiating is compromise. That's right. Big time, big time. So Ephesians, chapter four, if you wanna turn there. We're gonna look at a few verses in Ephesians, chapter four. We're gonna look at verse, it talks about verse three there. We're gonna look at verses three through six, Ephesians, chapter four. So the question it poses there, it said, "Ephesians, chapter four, verse three, urges Christians to be diligent to preserve the unity of the Spirit in the bond of peace. And what does it mean to preserve unity as opposed to create it?" So with that in mind, let's look at Ephesians four, verses three through six. Says, "Endeavoring to keep the unity of the Spirit in the bond of peace." And you know, and I've told y'all many times, I've told the church many times, my goal is to not get all of you in unity. My goal is to get you in unity with Christ. That's my goal. I don't want peace in our church for the sake of peace. I wanna have peace and unity with Christ. And you know, and I had a preacher tell me a long time ago, he said, "You know, you can be in the will of your church, just all in the will of the church and out of the will of God. Out of the will of God." I mean, but we got 99% of the people voting for it. You can be in the will of the church and out of the will of God. We need to be real careful with that. And I'm afraid a lot of churches are not in the will of God. And it's because they're not staying in here. So verse four there, and Paul is reminding the church of Ephesus, and he's reminding us too about unity in the church and who unity needs to be with. In verse four, he says, "There is one body, one Spirit, even as you are called in one hope of your calling, one Lord, one faith, one baptism, one baptism." We've got churches that baptize you in the name of this, and they baptize you in the name of that, and they baptize you in the name of this. The Bible says there's one, one baptism. "One God and Father of all, who is above all and through all and in you all." One. You hear the word, and they're repeated, "one, one, one." And I've said, I've made this comment many times. It is, you know, I hear families say, "Well, at least he's going to church." If they're going to a church that's leading them down a path away from the Lord, I'd rather them be at home. Watch your rest, for whatever, than being led astray. Because you've heard, you know, you get somebody in, and you wanna teach them something. If you can get somebody that don't already have bad habits, it's already teaching them, because you don't have to break them bad habits. Well, you get somebody that's been grounded, founded, and brought up into the church that's leading them astray, and then you try to talk to them about not what their church believes, what the Bible says. I corrected Camden. He was having a little issue with one of his little buddies here a while back. And one of his little buddies was doing a Bible study with one of his little cousins and was getting some very unscriptural guidance. And Camden come to me, was asking me some questions, and he says, "Well, I'm gonna tell him what you said." I said, "No, stop." I said, "You need to tell him what the Bible says, son." I said, "I don't ever wanna hear you answer a question, 'Well, my church believes,' or 'my daddy says.'" You need to know the answer. And you need to know that it comes from the Word of God, not from daddy. That's what you need to know. And that's what we as a church need to know. You know, don't ever catch yourself saying, "Well, it can and we believe." If you can't say, "The Bible says," then don't answer it any other way. Say, "I don't know." If all you can say is, "Well, it can and we believe," or Brother Jason says, then you got a shallow faith. You putting it on, don't put it on me. You need to be able to say, "Sir." Yeah. You need to be able to say, "Well, why do you feel that way? Because the Bible says." Why don't you feel this because the Bible says? And that's what we need to do. So we got to let the Lord be number one. And God is unity. He is unity. You know, we don't find love, and it talks about somewhere in here. We don't find love, and then find God. We find God, and then we find love. Because see, God is love. And let's look at a few scriptures here. It says, "What do you think," the question at the bottom, "What do you think is our role as believers to preserve unity?" What is our role? So if you wanna, I'm gonna look at a few here. Philippians, chapter one, verse 27. Real close to where we was at. It says, "Only let your conversation," and that is a reference to your lifestyle, "only let your conversation or your lifestyle be as it becomeeth the gospel of Christ, that whether I come and see or else be absent, I may hear your affairs," in a good way there, "that you stand fast," and there it is again, "one Spirit with one mind striving together for the faith of the gospel." And so Paul is telling the church of Philip I here, he's saying, "Look, you know, you need to get in unity with the faith of the gospel, whether I'm here or whether I'm not." You know, the old saying, "Well, well, well," and the cats will lay, the minds will play, right? And Paul's telling them here, he says, "Look, you need to get your life focused on Christ. You don't need me here to keep you directed. You need to get your focus on Christ." So now let's go, one chapter two and verse two. Still in Philippians there. It says, "Fulfill ye my joy that you be like-minded." And that is a complete reference to in Christ, having the same love. And it says here, "Be of one accord and of one mind." And that, again, that is with Christ. Or your goal should not be to get in line with canaan. It should be to get in line with the Word of God. So let's back up just a little bit. First Corinthians, and I'm gonna read them, you know, if you don't have to worry about turning to them, but if you're writing them down. First Corinthians, chapter one and verse 10. Just a few verses where it talks about unity. Chapter one, verse 10, says, "Now I beseech you, brethren, by the name of our Lord Jesus Christ." He did not say, "I beseech," so he's talking to the church of Corinth, right? He did not say, "I beseech you by the church of Corinth." He says, "By the name of the Lord, our Lord Jesus Christ," "our Lord," he says, "that you all speak the same thing, and that there be no divisions among you, but that you be perfectly joined in the same mind and in the same judgment." But he starts it off, says, "By the name of our Lord Jesus Christ." He doesn't say you need to be as one in one as the unity as Corinthians. He says you need to be in one in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. So now let's look at, back up again to Romans, chapter 15, and verse five and six. Says, "Now the God of patience and consolation grant you to be like-minded, one toward another," and he doesn't stop there. See, he could've stopped there, and he could've let it real open-ended. So he says, "Now the God of patience and consolation grant you to be like-minded, one toward another according to Christ Jesus." According to Christ Jesus. We got too many people that's hung up in the denomination things. Now, I'm Baptist to the core, but that ain't getting me to heaven. That ain't getting me to heaven. You know, and that's, I don't know how many times, you know, when I was there in Montana, you know, people say, "Well, what do you do?" They say, "Oh, well, I work in the timber shop back home when I pastor a church." "Oh, what kind of church is it?" "It's a Christian church." "Yeah, but what's a what?" And then most people, and you could tell they don't know anything about church. They said, "Well, what religion is it?" And they talk about, I was having a conversation with one guy. It was a decent conversation, and I tried to slip a few things in there. Of course, I'm on federal property, you know, gotta be a little careful about all that stuff. And he said, "You know, all the different religions," he said, "you know, Baptist and Pentecostal and Catholic, and those aren't different religions." There's Christianity, which I don't consider a religion, but it gets thrown into the category of religion. And then there's not Christianity. So, yeah. Christianity, it's about a relationship. But he says here that we need to be, verse five and six, "Like-minded, one toward another according to Jesus Christ or Christ Jesus, that you may be with one mind, one mouth, glorify God, even the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ." He says again, "So one mind and one mouth." So if we're studying the same thing, we're learning the same thing, we ought to be of one mind and one mouth. We wouldn't have to say, "Well, you know, what's Baptist believe?" No, just the word of God says. The word of God says. That's where we need to be. And let's look at one more, First Peter, chapter three and verse eight. It says, "Finally, be ye all of one mind, having compassion one of another. Love as brethren, be pitiful or kind-hearted, and be courteous." So we see all, and that's just a few scriptures about unity. There's a whole bunch more of them. So that question, you know, what is, what can we do? Rise up and bring harmony. Talks about preserving the unity of the Spirit and in our role as believers to preserve unity. Again, your goal should to be in unity with Christ. With Christ. That should be your goal. That top paragraph there, page 79, just the last portion of it, says, "We have the opportunity to set the temperature on issues like racial relationships, family life, and increasing political division." Does that not sound like August of 2021? "We do this based on God's standard, not based on how we're raised." I've heard people say, I've said, I've heard my oldest boy say, "Well, that's just not how it was raised." You know, not one thing or another. We should not, we should do things based on God's standard, not based on how we were raised. If I was gonna do things on how I was raised, I would not be here. I would not go to church on Sundays or Wednesdays. I would not. And so we can't base them, we gotta base it on God's standards, not how we were raised, not the color of our skin, or anybody else's, not the class that we're in before and beyond. All those designations were primarily men of God. Men of God. And you know, gosh, I sure don't want on my headstone, "He was a good Baptist." I don't want that. If you, well, listen, I wouldn't do that, but if you see that, go ahead and make out a trot line way. But God has a standard. It's a high standard that involves living in love and unity. He is calling each of us, as much as it depends on us, to live in peace with everyone. Romans, chapter 12, verse 18, talks about, it said, "As much as it is in you." Try to get along with everybody. You're not going to get along with everybody, but we need to strive to. Unity requires intentional effort and calls us out of our comfort zone. But God never said that living as a kingdom man was easy. Never, ever. I mean, life is gonna be tough, but what a blessing when you hand it over to the Lord. And you let Him have your job, you let Him have your family, you let Him have your wallet, you let Him have whatever He could use. Nothing worthwhile comes easy, but it will be worth it as we impact our broken and chaotic culture with the healing bomb of oneness. And the prayer that he writes down here, I just wanna read it to you. It says, "Father, in a culture that is consistently, that consistently promotes disunity, division, distrust, anger, and blame, help us to be kingdom men who honor and reflect you through all we say and do. Grant us the wisdom and courage necessary to stand strong as men of unity in a world of hate. Bring unity where there's division, and help us to be men of peace who accomplish much for your kingdom, in Christ's name." You know, and but we're getting to the point, you know, used to, a Christian health was a welcomed thing. But when Franklin Graham put his ship, his hospital ship together and tried to go to New York at the beginning of this pandemic, that might as well have been Satan himself is how he was treated and how his people were treated. And it was terrible. And right now, the pandemic over around Jackson, Mississippi area is running rampant. Guess who's there? Franklin Graham and his crew. You seen that in the news anywhere? Nope. They've been there. Gloved up, masked up, right in the smack middle of all of that mess. And all they're doing is getting condemned. Things are getting all out of whack, and we have to do a better job of being who God has called us to be. So scripture there on page 80, Galatians 2:20, says, "I have been crucified with Christ." So Paul, Paul absolutely, when he met Jesus Christ on the road to Damascus, he absolutely considered himself to be crucified with Christ. And he said, and we all gotta get to this point, "It is no longer I who live." That is where he got to. He said, "But Christ lives in me, and the life which I now live in the flesh, I live by faith in the Son of God who loved me and gave Himself for me." You know, nowadays, that would be more applicable, or at least it would be more commonly said, that, you know, "I'm crucified with my church. It's no longer I that live, but I'm a Baptist." You know, but Paul doesn't say that. He said, "It's no longer I that live, but Christ in me." He said, "I now live, I live in the flesh. I live by faith in the Son of God who gave Himself for me." We've got to get things in the right order. And it gives three points there on page 81. "Define your humanity by your Christianity." Again, not by your denomination, not by anything else. Define your humanity by your Christianity. It says, "All," or excuse me, "as a kingdom man, Christians, a Christian is to be the adjective which defines you, not your race, creed, culture, background, perspectives, preferences. Whenever these things conflict with the living God as the modifier of who you are, you must adjust and align yourself once again under Him." It can't be based on anything. It says, "Not race, not creed, not culture, not background, not perspective, or preferences." So we gotta define your humanity by your Christianity. The second thing, it says, "Lay down your own desires." Lay down your own desires. Your number one priority's gotta be make God's standards and His rules your desires. That's what Paul was saying over here in Galatians 2:20. He says, "My life is all about Jesus." From here forth, "My life is all about Jesus." So lay down your own desires. The third thing, it says, "Live by faith in the Son of God." Again, "Live by faith." People, I hear that people say that all the time. Keep the faith, keep the faith. What are you, most people don't have a clue what they're talking about. We need to keep the faith in Christ. We need to keep our faith in Christ. It says, "Find friends who hold you accountable." See, that, most of us are the opposite. We're not gonna go hang out with people that's gonna hold us accountable. We're gonna go hang out with people that are gonna agree with us in our grappes, in our grappes. So we need to be, it talks about, you know, assess your relationships. Surround yourself with like-minded individuals. And again, I don't, I'm not looking for somebody that's like-minded in my denomination. I want somebody that's like-minded in the Word of God. Because I know a lot of people in my denomination I do not agree with. Because they're all about a denomination and not so much about the Word of God. So which of these, and this is just something to think about, which of these principles do you need to take hold of most today? So is your life defined by your Christianity? Do you need to lay down your own desires? Do you need to get your life to where you live by faith in the Son of God? Just which one of those, or maybe more than one, do you need to get situated in your life? Page 82 there, it says, "God did it." When things go wrong in your life, where do you look first? Do you try and find how you may have contributed, contributed to what went wrong? Or are you quick to blame someone or something else? You know, in politics, they call, you know, they claim it or blame it, right? It's good to claim it, it's bad to blame. It had to be that God before me that made it like this. God will often allow us to sit in the disorder of our lives in order that we might return to Him and experience refreshing and revival. A lot of times, God's just gonna let you hang out in that mess until you turn around and look back up, until you get up. God is going to, you know, and there's a lot of other things that's just rampant in our community right now, and it's getting kinda covered up with COVID, like a lot of other things, is drugs. Drugs are rampant, you know, right here. Within a BB shot of this church. And people are dying, and it's getting covered up. But they're bad. Go talk to anybody in law enforcement and ask them how the drug situation in our parish is right now. It is bad. It is bad. So we need to, you know, and sometimes God, until we fix it, then again, abortion, abortion, abortion. I can't say that enough. We need to be upset about that. We need to be upset about that. And you know, when somebody stands and says, "I care about your health," and there's another thousand babies dying in the last hour, I have a hard time believing them when they say they're really concerned about our health. Really. And they say they're concerned about separating kids from their parents. I don't know no kids separated from their parent either, but you're saying that, but you're saying it's okay to kill a baby. I got a problem with that. We need to return to Him, and then we'll experience refreshing and revival. You know, until, until our churches, see, people, a lot of times, you know, we talk about revival, revival, revival. And I love a revival. I'm praying about us doing a revival already. Got somebody in mine already. But see, the revival is for the church. You know, we think sometimes, "Oh, we have a revival," and you know, thousands of people get saved. That's, and if that happens, that's great. But that is, the point of a revival is to wake the church up. But then we have a revival, and we'll have 30, 40 people show up. We don't want revival. We don't want it because we're not, it isn't starting here. Y'all heard me talk about that circle? I didn't make that up. I read that in the Bible study. Draw a circle on the floor, step in and say, "God, right here, where I wanna start a revival." And that, that's how it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen with a church. God doesn't stir up issues for us to deal with just, or to deal with just for the fun of it. But He does allow negative consequences in our lives to crop up when He is trying to get our attention. And Second Chronicles there, you can read the whole scripture, but I'm just gonna pull one part out. It said, "God troubled them with every kind of distress, because they were, they were doing a lot of undoubted things. They were okay with a lot of undoubted things, just like our churches." I mean, we got churches. I have read quotes from pastors that say, "It is okay, and it is good and fine to have an abortion." I've heard, I've read quotes from preachers, pastors, calling themselves a Christian. Uh-uh. That is not of God. So a few questions for you to think about, and please, if you've got an answer, just shout it out. "Why would God trouble the Israelites?" And that's, it's reference to the piece of the scripture I just read here. "God troubled them with every kind of distress." So why would God trouble the Israelites with every kind of distress? Anybody got an answer? To draw them back. That's right, here. To draw them back. Yes, sir. I believe with all my heart. This nation was founded on the freedom to practice Christianity. See, back, back when they, when they put in there the word religion, that meant one thing. That meant Christianity. Now that means all kinds of stuff, just like everything else that we have just totally, totally messed up. You know, the word gay means happy. We've adulterated, adulterated, we've messed up that word, whatever I'm trying to say. And you know, and we, the rainbow, that is, that is a message from God, straight out of the scripture. We perverted. That's the word I was looking for. That's the word I was looking for. We've perverted these words. So do you believe that God still does that towards groups of people, congregations, or nations today? Can you think of any examples that you feel may be from God's hand? I I do. You know, all that stuff's in the scripture. All that's in the scripture. People are like, I can't believe this is happening. I said, well, have you ever read the Bible? You ought not to be that surprised. The Bible says there's going to be a big, there's going to be a great falling away. And and I think, I think it was, I think it was me and Brother Gil was talking the other day about over in Amos. And I used it in a couple of Fridays ago on my devotion. And a few of you have watched it. And so you know, it it says in there that there will be a, that there will be a famine in the land, right? It says, not a food. Amos chapter four, ten, not a food, not a water, but of the word of God. And I don't, and this is just my personal opinion. I don't think it's actually a physical absence of this. I think it is an absence of it here. In our lives as Christians. People are going to walk around and they're not going to see it anymore. They don't see it in the church. They don't hear it from the church. You know, we're we're fighting over things that ain't even in the Bible. And and we're calling it worthy. So turning away, this this virus, God's trying to get our attention. The the abortion stuff, you know, they should make, we we've got to repent and and we've got to stand up. The next one here says, can you identify a time in your life when you could see God allowed troubles in order to turn, to to draw you back to him and his rule over you? And and you know, are we willing to turn back? You know, I've seen, I've seen folks that, you know, I I know God used your accident. And and I've talked, you know, others, God used some just about near death experiences. Cause I know you didn't think you was going to make it. And 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 you know, other people, and God uses that stuff. But are we willing to admit and turn back? Are we, are we willing to do that? We we're in a spiritual pandemic is what we're in, much, much, much greater than we are a medical pandemic. Much greater. But but what do we see more of? What do we hear more of? And really, what are we concerned more about? Not the spiritual pandemic that we're in. We're we're worried about a lot of those stuff. But God will occasionally, while unrented, and which I do believe he is right now, in order to urge his people to a heartfelt call on him for help. Sometimes it makes, it takes a mess to make a miracle. And and I I truly believe, I mean, and and I work for the government and I hope they watch this video. If the government comes and 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 says, we'll take care of everything. Don't worry about it. You need to pack up and run. And that's what they're trying to do right now. They're trying to make it, they're, I don't know if you realize it, but they're trying to get full authority for all voting in Washington DC. They're trying to take full authority. Oh, you states don't need to worry about all this trouble and confusion. We'll take care of this for you. They're trying to take that from the state. You need to do your homework. We're in a spiritual pandemic is what we're really in. Sometimes it takes a mess to make a miracle. We don't need to forget that. Top of page eighty four there, what are some ways God purges us in the, as individuals, as well as collectively in the body of Christ? And and we really talked about it, you know, allows trouble to come in, to wake us up. You know, sometimes we get real complacent. You know, what Jesus tell his disciples when he went to pray? He said, hey, hang out right here watching prayer. He's telling, stay ready, stay ready. With Gideon was trying to figure out how many, he couldn't figure out, he was so confused. He didn't know what God wanted him to do. And he was trying to throw up all kind of excuses. I'm poor, I'm the youngest guy in my family, I'm scared of death. There's no way I can lead an army of men. And then he finally gives in. He says, well, gosh, I don't know what to do, Lord. I don't even know how many people to get. So he just gets everybody, God says, too many. He cuts down, that's too many. Well, how in the world am I going to figure out? He said, you pick the ones that are paying attention. And there was three hundred of them when they, when they got, went down to get water. Three hundred of them kept their eyes open. They were ready. They were paying attention. And he says, there's your men. And then went and took, with his hundreds, he went and took out thousands in the name of God. So what are, what are some ways he allows trouble to come often, often as consequences of our falling away? As a nation, it sure appears that we are falling away. It sure appears that way. So it says, list three sins or or cultural problems that need to be purged from our country today in order to be replaced by God's rule. My number one is always going to be abortion. Number two, I put greed, money. And and number three, I put self righteousness. I mean, if if I I don't, I I can't do the math. If I got a one hundred and seventy, one hundred and eighty thousand dollar a year job, which is good money, and 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 in a couple of terms, I'm a millionaire. That that don't add up in my math. Greed, self righteousness, that that there is a problem in our nation and it needs to be purged. So what can be done in order to help remove these problems and replace them with the truth of God's word and healing power? And I I wrote, you know, turned to him and I thought of Psalm one twenty one, one of my favorite songs, probably my favorite song. Says, you know, I I I look unto the Lord. I look to the hills from where my help comes from, but to God. That is what we've got to do. A few pieces there out of bottom eighty four says, we we miss the reality that God has allowed this order in order to bring about a correction and a cleaning. Sometimes we just, we look at it as judgment. I don't know so much that it's judgment. It is just an opportunity for us to turn back. And about correction and cleaning, he says, then we, then we will just move from one symptom to another symptom. If we don't overlook this, we will miss the opportunity to address the root that has produced the fruit that has led to the confusion of hopelessness on display. Says, to repair and restore our culture, we must understand the spiritual components behind our problems before proposing pragmatic solution to the crisis. Says, to briefly examine one problem among many. Over the past several years, our national conversation has returned again and again to race and racism. Racism is not a bad habit. It is not a mistake. It is a sin, period. It it is a sin, but but we keep turning again and again to it. And the answer is not sociology. The answer is theology. The answer is Christ. That that is a major sin. But but there's this big movement now to roar up racism again, to roar up. And it's this critical race theory that thank the Lord, they just voted down to not bring it into our schools. And it is all about teaching you, America hates you. America is racist. America is this, America, it's horrible. It's horrible. And they're, they're trying to convince you. You know, I read in one of the Bible studies we've done with our youth years ago. It was a little story about a, a guy got a bunch of eggs together. And one of them ended up being an eagle egg with his chickens. And this eagle was raised with the chickens. And and every time a chicken hawk would fly around, all the chickens would run. A lot of eagles run up there and bubble up. And all the chickens said, man, what's your problem? You better run. He said, why? See, we're supposed to be, we're supposed to be scared, scared of a hawk. And 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 finally, they told that, they told that eagle enough that every time the chicken hawk came, he started running. They convinced him that he was a chicken. And that's what's happening with a lot of us. And and he totally, and he wasn't a chicken. And he wasn't scared of the little hawk, but they told him he was a chicken enough that he finally just, okay. And that's what's happening with this, you know, with racism. And and they're, they're bringing something and making something out, or there's some problems, absolutely. But 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 the the hate that is being generated isn't there. It's being made. It's being made. So in what ways have we learned to dismiss racism rather than confront it? Whether in conversation or jokes or exclusionary choices? You know, there's, we we can't avoid, you know, avoiding, ignoring something isn't going to fix anything. But trying to make it something it's not. And and I tell you, you know, we'll never fix hate with hate. We'll never fix discrimination with discrimination. But that's what we're doing. I mean, that's how we're trying to fix problems. You'll never fix hate with more hate. You will never fix sin with more sin. And we've got to look at it through the eyes of what God would have us to do. So the last question there on that page says, in addition to racism, what other cultural problems do we need to take a spiritual driven approach to resolving? I bet you can't guess what I wrote down number one. I wrote abortion. And and but but and and that's right there in the top two. It is absolutely breaking the family apart. And and you know, we need to, and how do we need to fix abortion? Stop, stop. We need to stop. Self righteousness, we need to turn to Christ. Greed, we talked about that a minute ago. We cover just a little bit more and we'll breeze through this part pretty quick, that last little section there. The gospel and race kind of picks up where we finished up in the last little section. And again, I want you to go, don't just, just listen to me. Go, make sure you read through these things. So about two thirds of the way down that top paragraph, it's time, the conversation includes topics of what people are willing to do. In order to combat racism in our society at large, there are two types of sin in scripture. And and again, that's what, whether we're talking about abortion or or racism or or whatever, it is sin. Sin is the problem. That is the root of the problem. You know, a lot of plants, if you don't ever get the root killed, it's going to keep coming back. It's going to continue to be, oh, tall tree, sweet gum. Go knock the top off, it's going to come right back until you get the root of the problem. And see, that's, that's the deal with with racism. And then there are a lot of people out there trying to do it, but they sure ain't getting much media attention that are really trying to get to the root of the problem. The root of the problem is just flatting out sin. And again, it talks about two types of sin. The Bible talks about these. So the first type is the sin of commission. You know you're doing it. You know you're doing it. And the second type, it is called a sin of omission. It's really, there's just two types of sin. That's it. And and James chapter four, verse seventeen, says, therefore, to one who knows the right thing to do and does not do it, to him that is sin. So a lot of times we think if we don't do something wrong, well, then we're okay. Well, James takes it a step further. He says, but you knew what you were supposed to do. Did you do that? Well, no, but I didn't do anything wrong. But did you do what was right? And and James says, that that's, he's talking to us Christians. He's talking to us men. Then then that's a sin. Then that's a sin. You know, what that would be like is, you know, you listen to, just just say a racially motivated joke and you just stay there and participate, laugh with it. Well, but I didn't say anything. But but you didn't do what was right. You you didn't say, look, man, you need to just stop. Just quit. I don't want to hear that. And and you know, we didn't do what was wrong, but we did, we do what was right. So some things, we need to, we need to address them. And it asks you there, and that's kind of that sin of omission. Well, I really didn't, really didn't do anything wrong. You know, and and that's, that's that saddest scene in Pharisees, that self righteous attitude that they had. They thought just as long as they didn't physically, literally themselves do it, even though they had murder committed, they didn't do it themselves. The Lord says, you are just as guilty. And that's what James is reiterating here. It says, where, on a scale of one to ten, just kind of thinking in your own heart, how aware were you of this type of sin, omission? You know, what, what, now, now that you're thinking about this in your life, and I'm not asking you to answer this out loud, but on sins of omission, kind of where do you fall? Where do you fall? And where do you think, why do you think there's less emphasis of of the sin found in James four seventeen by spiritual leaders than other more actively apparent sins? You know, why, why don't we put a lot of emphasis? You don't hear a lot of people talking about do what's right, do what's right. Right. We want to talk about, don't, don't do what's wrong. We don't talk so much about, but do what's right. You know, sitting and and, you know, watching murder happen and not telling somebody. That would be a sin of omission. You you need, you need to go let somebody know, something really bad just happened. Yes, sir. It is. It sure is. Well, we don't like to talk about, don't be talking about that, Paul, right?
Where are you, where are you in trouble where you list that one to ten? What point would you be in trouble?
Yeah. But why do you think that? You know, because it it's, it's not easily seen. You know, we don't, we don't like to talk about it since it's not easily seen there. Micah, he talks about doing justice, said, he had Micah six eight, they're top of page eighty seven. He has told you, oh, man, what is good? And what does the Lord require of you but to do, there's the word, to do justice, to love kindness and to walk humbly with your God? That's in a song, actually. And and that, you know, that makes me, that verse right there makes me think about the the Good Samaritan, the story of the Good Samaritan, right? The preacher walks by. So I got to get to church. Walks around, then another religious kind of guy says, I mean, he kind of peeked at it a little bit. I just don't have time to fool with it. And 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 then the next guy comes by that that of all three would have been the least likely to ever been expected. And he helps. He helps. See, the other two sin. The other two, those were sins of omission. They didn't do anything wrong, right? They didn't do what was right. They didn't help, and they should have. They didn't help when they could have. And and a lot of times, that is the problem. That is the problem. You know, you're not, you're not telling the bad jokes, but but you sure hanging around listening to them laugh at them. That is sins of omission. So how does failing to do what the Lord requires here? How does failing to do what the Lord requires here, a sin of omission? And and just, you know, to think about some examples. Sin here isn't a knowledge problem, but an action problem, James four seventeen. And what he's talking about here in Micah, to do justice. James says, do what is right, not just don't do what is wrong. So the problem, again, is an action problem. Micah doesn't call us to love justice. Neither does it call us to affirm justice. This passage specifically calls us to do justice, to do justice. And the Hebrews said, it could be translated make or manufacturer. It is action is what he's talking about there in Micah where he says to to do justice. And the last couple of pages here, just a few little highlights. God has spoken on the issues at hand. He has not stuttered until we align our hearts, thoughts, words, and actions underneath his overarching rule, we're living in sin. We're living in sin. You know, I've heard people skip out on Bible study because they say, I just can't get it. It's just too hard. Well, you ain't going to get it at home. You ain't going to get it. Good thing there's Pam out here saying, ain't too much. You ain't going to get it not studying. Never going to happen. Never going to happen. You know, somebody says, I, you know, I don't want to get in the water, Mike, I can't swim. You ain't ever going to learn up on dry land. I like, it was, it was one of John Wayne's old westerns and he stopped by and he was helping. He was all the time helping somebody. And 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 the the kids over playing by the pond or something and John walks over there and then the mama comes running, oh, no, no, he can't swim. He says, oh, he can't swim, huh? He picks him up by the bridges and he throws him in the lake. And he goes to fighting and fighting and fought over with. He gets it figured out and he gets to helping himself up. And and then the mama says, something, somewhere in the midst of it, she says, I can't swim. He went, oh, you can't swim either. And buddy, she took off to the house. And but you ain't ever going to learn how to swim on dry land. You ain't ever going to learn what the Lord would have you to do if you ain't getting in the Word. You're not going to learn what he would have you to do as as a person. You're not going to learn what he would have you to do a, a, as a Vernon Parish resident. And you're not going to learn what he would have you to do as a man if you don't get in the Word of God. And just about the time you think you ain't getting something out of it, God will bless you. God will bless you. He'll just slip right in there and throw a little blessing on you. So righteousness is the moral standard of right and wrong to which God holds people accountable based on his divine standard. See, if we would start to look at what's best for our nation, if we would start to look at what's best as opposed to everybody rather than what's best for my party. Everything is so partisan now. It is, it is disgusting. Everything is so partisan now. It is, it is disgusting. Everything is. It should be, you know, righteousness should be the moral standard. Justice is the equitable and impartial application of God's moral law and society. Psalm eighty-nine fourteen says, "Righteousness and justice are the foundation of your throne. Loving kindness and truth go before you." That is what the Word of God says. One question there. "Why is it important to balance both righteousness and justice?" Because justice doesn't always mean punishment. You know, sometimes we think, when we think of the word justice, you know, justice shall be served, we think of punishments. It doesn't always have to be. Not the way that we look at punishment. And, you know, it says, "Who are some role models for you who have lived committed to both righteousness and justice?" And, you know, you're just thinking through your life, you know, who's somebody that's just really, really been a role model? That really, really just seen people. They didn't see culture. They didn't see economic status. They didn't see color. They just saw people, people that needed help. You know, I thought of a couple, and I'm sure you've probably written something down, or just got something in mind. And, uh, second to last paragraph there, "When men decide to stand together for what is right and just in society, we can make a difference. We can change the trajectory of our culture. We can influence others for good by advancing God's kingdom agenda on earth." We do this primarily through the spread of the gospel, spread of the gospel. Unity isn't just about getting along. It's about getting things done. You know, like the old guy in Texas, I never met the old man, but it was his son. And he was on up in years, too. He said, "You know, my daddy said, 'Somebody gotta do something.'" Said, "We doing all this praying. Somebody gotta do something, though." You know, sometimes that's what it is. And, uh, you know, if you need to dig a hole, and you pray, and have a hole dug, and you got a shovel, go get that shovel. Go get it and use it, right? We can change the trajectory of our culture. We can influence others for good by advancing God's kingdom agenda on earth. And again, we do this primarily through the gospel. Unity isn't just about getting along. It's about getting things done. We'll never experience a movement of kingdom men rising in our nation until we have kingdom men relating to each other in the body of Christ in an authentic, mutually honoring manner. You know, when I send out the invitation or the reminder for our Bible study, it is, uh, two, twenty, forty, sixty, right at sixty men that I send a reminder to. At least every couple of times I send out a reminder, it's about sixty men. And there's, uh, most of them ain't got no reason they can't be here. Now, some do, I know. Some have jobs and have other commitments tonight or whatever, but that's the problem. We're not making the Lord a priority. We're not making the Lord a priority. And it asks us here, it said, "Pray for open doors to share the gospel with others." I think it is a critical, critical time to go on and be bold and ask people, "Do you know Jesus Christ is your Lord and Savior?" We've got to ask people that. And if they get mad, at least you planted a seed. Let it be. That's right. Take time to ask God for ways that you can be more proactive in doing, doing justice. You know, James talks about doing, and we looked over there in, was it Micah six eight? He talks about doing justice within your sphere of influence. Pray for your small group and ask for insight from the Holy Spirit on ways that we can tear down walls. It says to tear down walls of racism, because that is a, that is way up in topic right now. How can we tear down those walls in order to advance the love of God through the gospel of Christ to a world that is in great, great need? World, but right here in our community, right here on post, in our parish, in our state. And, and we need to, we need, again, we don't need to just be sitting back and praying. We need to be doing something. That's what James talked about. That's what Micah talked about. We need to do something. Well, that brings us through the rest of that section there. And next time, we will study week six there, Setting the Stage. Just study that whole chapter. We won't make it through it the next time, but go ahead and, uh, you know, read through that chapter there or that section. We'll get kicked off, and I think we already got somebody lined up to cook our meal next week, so that's good. But any last thoughts, or?
Could you give me some page numbers?
Yeah, here, just a second. I'll come back here and show you. All right. If nobody has anything, let's stand, and we'll be dismissed.